Good evening Wakefield and welcome to a first. It is council on the common. It is the first time that our town council has been here with an incredible backdrop. We've come out of the studio and lakeside to our greatest asset, Lake Quanah Powhatan. So with that at 6:33 I will call this meeting to order. And we will begin tonight with the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to introduce the person leading us in the pledge of allegiance. That's Ms. Karen Feller. Karen has been an incredibly strong advocate for the lake behind us here now. She has had decades of dedication to improving the water quality and the quality around this lake and we are incredibly indebted to her for her selfless commitment to all that we have to appreciate here this evening because of those efforts and those efforts are certainly ongoing. So Karen if you wouldn't mind coming up and leading us in the pledge of allegiance.
Where should I stand?
Perfect.
Can you hear me? Yes. I hope I can remember. The last time I led the pledge of allegiance was in Ms. Kilpatrick's class in the first grade in a little, in Vandiver School in Temple, Texas. So that was seven decades ago. I'll do my best. Anyway, I pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you could remain standing just for a moment. We lost a treasured member of our community recently, former selectman, former chairman of the board of selectmen, Jim Good. Jim was laid to rest today, not very far from here. And so if we could just have just a brief moment of silence remembering his dedication to our community. Item number three on our agenda is attendance. I see that everyone is here with the exception of councilors Dinaco and councillor May who were unable to make it here this evening. So we have a voting body of five members this evening as well as a town council, Mullen, and clerk Dalton. Dalton, excuse me. Item number four is the approval of the minutes from our August 5th, 2019 meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes as drafted.
So moved.
Seconded by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by councillor Chines. Do I have any discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote of 5-0. Next item on the agenda, item number five is public engagement. Madam clerk, do we have anyone that has expressed interest?
No.
So no one has signed up for public engagement? We'll move on to item number six. Item number six is recognition and thanks. It is our great honor tonight to be able to recognize two phenomenal groups that have had such an impact on the environment that we are sitting in here tonight. The first, if I could ask members of Friends of Lake Quanah Powhatan, FOLQ, to please come up to the table.
These are our attending board of director members.
I'm a senior citizen so I can sit down.
Well, being here on the shores of Lake Quanah Powhatan, it seemed only fitting that we have Friends of Lake Quanah Powhatan here this evening with us tonight. And I wanted to just take a moment to help everyone understand, who may not know, some of the really important impactful work that Friends of Lake Quanah Powhatan have done for us here in town. FOLQ was formed back in 1991 and 28 years later it's going strong. We have FOLQ to thank for so many incredible projects around this lake. Bricks, the Bricks by the Lake program at Colonel Connolly Park, a bench replacement program that was begun back in 2002, a history of ongoing educational programs about the lake water quality and the watershed field trips that have been a hallmark of the work that you've been doing. The creation of Gertrude Spaulding Park at the head of the lake, the initiation of a goose control program, providing doggy bags around the lake for those that are walking to keep the quality of the experience improved for everyone. And now most recently, an exciting new project that is at the head of the lake that was talked about at our recent town council meeting that will improve Colonel Connolly and Gertrude Spaulding Park. It's an incredible project. It's a tremendous undertaking. We have a stormwater runoff retention area and stormwater management in a way we've not seen before up there. The design has been in collaboration with Department of Public Works and it's been a great public-private partnership that we have. Friends of Lake Quanah Powhatan, you have been tremendous partners to our community. We're incredibly indebted to all of your service all of these years. We're excited about all the projects that we know are coming up off on the horizon and I very much look forward to your active engagement with one of our future agenda items, which is the creation of a new clean lake committee. So on behalf of the entire town council, thank you for all that you have done. Thank you for all that you continue to do and please know that you will always have a strong partner with the town here and with all of our departments. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Another important group that we're looking to recognize this evening is the Wakefield Center Neighborhood Association. So if we have any members from WCNA that could identify themselves.
Oh, we got a lot.
Oh, yes.
That's awesome.
I know.
So Wakefield Center Neighborhood Association, thank you so much. Thank you for coming out this evening. On behalf of the town council, we'd like to also recognize the great work that you have done and thank you for all of your participation in our community. A lot of people don't know all the work that WCNA does. You're an awfully modest group. You're not flashy, but you do a lot of important work. Some of the projects that I would like to highlight, there is replacement of the pipe fencing, which is along the upper common. That was in disrepair. There were many pieces of pipe that were missing or in disrepair and you did a phenomenal job of restoring that upper common outside fencing to its glory. You also recently completed the floor away fence project along Church Street as well, replacing a chain link fence with a beautiful new fence. A tremendous improvement relative to that. You also had a replacement recently of the Spanish-American war memorial plaque and that's right on the rockery and people may not realize that that was actually created from another war memorial plaque that is in, that was in Everett. And you had a mold made and you created an absolutely fantastic addition. So we're really thankful for that and for all the work that you do. And you also support and promote events down here on the common each year. We have Festival by the Lake, which is a tremendous success and we also have the annual egg hunt as well. So on behalf of the council, I wish to thank all of you for your unwavering commitment and support to our community. I know that you are looking for more hands. More hands make for easy work. And so if anyone is interested, they can go to info@WCNA.org and anyone can provide their time, talent, and treasure. And you also have a website as well, WCNA.org, if people want to go and know how to participate and take part. But we are tremendously grateful for all the work that you have done and if anyone else would like to acknowledge your work by WCNA, please.
Great job and great work.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah, everything's wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out and again, thank you for all of your work.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is item number seven. This is under notice of events and again, being, I guess, on the side yard of what is often known as the Stone Church, I'd like to introduce three members of the First Parish Congregational Church, or two actually tonight, to come before us and talk about their 375th anniversary of that, of their church and an event that they have here on the common coming up later on this month. So with that, if you could introduce yourselves, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the Reverend John Dale, sitting on my left, who's pastor of the church and the entire congregation, we send greetings to the town, council, and to the town of Wakefield from First Parish Congregational Church as we celebrate our birthday and the 375th anniversary of the town. We had to tell you about a couple of events planned for this month. An afternoon of fun and games here on the lower common on September the 21st and a tour of the church building with a historical commentary and a viewing of our beautiful stained glass on September the 28th. My name is Christopher Hurren. I'm currently serving as the church historian at First Parish. My wife Janet over there with a dog and our three children have worshipped here for the past 30 years. If you know Jesus Christ as your Lord and Savior or you just believe God has a purpose for your life, there has been no better place to grow your faith since 1644 than this wonderful church on my left. And I urge anyone interested to come to our Sunday services or to the free classes we offer, all designed to bring us hope and spiritual strength and a desire to serve others. I'm an immigrant citizen from England, as were a majority of the 20,000 people who sailed into Massachusetts Bay between 1630 and 1640, seeking a new life in a new England. My wife's eighth great-grandfather was one of them. His name was Thomas Parker and he landed in Ipswich Bay in the summer of 1635. Thomas Parker left England under difficult circumstances. He had been born in a year when Catholic terrorists led by Guy Fawkes tried to blow up the Houses of Parliament in 1605. His was a prominent English family. His grandmother was Mary Saltonstall, a surname which would become well-known in Boston. His grandfather was a colonel and his great-grandfather was a knight and a landed baron. Why Thomas Parker chose to leave England in 1635 is a mystery, which I will attempt to explain if you join me on our tour on September the 28th at noon in the church on our left. Janet and I were married in 1981 and we lived in Winthrop, quite near her birthplace, but we wanted to find a better place to raise our family and we soon found this delightful town of Wakefield with its indescribably beautiful lake, solidly-built homes and churches and friendly people. We purchased a house on the aptly-named Pleasant Street on the east side of town on my right, where we lived for 20 years. In 2003, we moved to our present home on the west side on Parker Road, where we've lived since then, in a house that was built by students from Wakefield High School in Thomas Parker, after whom Parker Road is named, first lived in Lynn in 1635. He married a young woman named Amy Alesworth that same year and they too wanted a better place to raise their family in this new world. In the place which is now called Wakefield, he found a green and pleasant land. Quote, "A verdant place filled with plump wild pigeons and turkeys, abundant fish in the lakes and rivers, and many succulent berries growing on the plentiful trees," as you can see if you look around. The Native Americans who had lived here for perhaps 300 years were said to be generally friendly and willing to trade their land for the supplies and tools which the English had brought. Parker and a few others were granted acreage within the 10 square miles which would become Redding, North Redding, and Wakefield, purchased for 10 pounds by the Mass Bay Company in 1639. By 1644, the seven families living hereabouts were ready to form a church where they could worship our gracious God in peace. The church would become the government of this new town, then called Lynn Village, a place of safety around which the community would grow. Thomas Parker was one of the three original deacons at First Parish Church, founded in 1644. A deacon is concerned with the spiritual health of the church. Just 18 years ago this week, I was serving on the board of deacons at First Parish when the terrorists attacked New York. All the local churches in the synagogue in Wakefield joined together and we held a service in this church to pray for those who had suffered. In shock, we prayed together and we sang, "God is our refuge and our strength, a never-ending help in times of trouble." And that statement is as true today as it was in 1644. I hope you will join Pastor John and me on September 28th to tour the church at noon and I'll invite Pastor John to tell you about the event we also have planned for September the 21st.
Thank you Chris, Mr. Chairman and council. Thank you for having us. I'm new, I came in April, so beautiful town, as Chris said, very friendly. We're very glad to be here. And my wife and I just live up on the hill on Curve Street, so people ask if I walk to work, I don't. But so yes, on September 21, the Games on the Green will be held here and all kinds of wonderful events for children. We've interfaced with the YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, Girl Scouts, and so on, Boy Scouts here in town. And some of you probably won't do the bouncy house, but there'll be a petting zoo and we're hoping for really good weather. There'll be music and food and everything's free and we're just hoping the young children will come and just have a great time here in the community. We hope to make this an annual event, so we're looking forward to that. Also, we have a program that also starts on the 28th, which is the same day as the tour, which is First Place for Health. One of our gentleman and his wife in church, Ken Hodgson, they are in charge of that. It's a 12-week health-based program of diet and exercise and that's beginning on the 28th at 9 o'clock and it meets for about an hour. We also then will be having a special 375th official birthday on November 10th. And so we'll be having, we usually have two services now, one at 9:30, a traditional 11 o'clock contemporary, but we'll be coming together, one service at 10:30 to celebrate the birthday, 375 years. We've invited some of the original members, but they cannot attend, so. But you all can come because you're still here. And when I first came, I asked where the original members were and I was told they're right next door where they are. But so thank you so much that we could have a few moments of your time and we look forward, especially me, getting to know all of you better in the years to come. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Our next, our next item on the agenda is item number eight. That is the Wakefield Communitary Program. And to give just a little bit of background relative to that, I know going back a few years, when I used to sit on the finance committee, I would always hear the reports each year that we were losing more trees than we were planting on any given year. And so we had a tree deficit. We continue to have a tree deficit as of today. I was speaking with our forestry director, Dennis Fazio, and we determined that it's, we're taking down approximately twice as many trees as we're planting in any given year at present. So it's a pretty significant deficit when you think about it, but it's not insurmountable. So I've been working with the Department of Public Works, working with Dennis specifically and talking through ways and strategies that we can try to remedy the deficit and turn it into a surplus. And so I'm happy to announce this evening, the Wakefield Communitary Program. This is a program that will allow for anyone to donate a tree at a cost of $300. If you want to donate any amount of money, it will be deposited into a gift account that will then be used for the purchase of trees. And our expectation and intention is to plant a lot more trees than we're taking down. And we take down trees for any number of reasons. Those reasons include things like some of the acid rain, some of our plowing practices that leave us the black pavement that we see after snowstorms and the like. Some of it is just life cycle and trees planted in the 70s for a lot of reasons have been impacted. Disease has impacted as well. And we also have a number of issues with the fact that these are considered in essence urban trees because they're planted very near sidewalks with very small expanses of space to plant them within. So Dennis has been a champion of our tree program, but he needs our help, as does DPW. So Dennis, if you could step up for a moment and answer any questions the council may have on this program, that would be great. Again, this is Dennis Fazio from the Department of Public Works, Department of Forestry, and our tree warden.
Yep. So you know, in any given year, and certainly the last few years, we've been hit with some really hard weather. So you know, the good part of those storms is we work so well with the light department, our in-house, you know, guys at the forestry park, they do a tremendous job. And we have a really good system in place with also contractors. So we can remedy a storm that hits, like the heavy wet snow that rips apart our forestry stuff. So within a day or so, the roads are all clean, we get a pat on the back, but months moving forward, we realize how many more trees are damaged out there and the guys really are my eyes and ears out there. So we go for a simple trimming job, limb removal, and they see notice something that's structurally horrible for the tree that needs to come down. So our typical removal list can all of a sudden just grow tremendously. And this year we had snowstorm back in March, we had little microbursts that hit right after and the same thing. We had cleaned up after those events quickly, but it gave us three to six months and driving around, we knew how many more trees were going to come down because they were jeopardized. So I think, like I said, years ago, we were planting more than removing, but the last few years it's reversed. So obviously we have to pull our resources, try to get more money in, whether it be, you know, try to get the crews out there on overtime to, you know, take away. Because typically we're based more on taking care of stuff that's really emergency-based, safety reasons, and that's kind of the priority. Then there's the trimming stuff, there's visibility issues, and then obviously planting comes in there. So depending on what we have going on in the town, we're always stacking what we're doing, we can lose that planting window. So I think if we supplement the money, we get donations in, the money's there, we can supplement with outside, get a contractor in for a few days to plant trees, give us a jump start. We can also make it a priority too to get out there and that's where we're at now is we need to focus on picking a time and sticking to it and trying not to get pulled off. That's the big thing. So and this will be, I think, because we want to get the trees back, so.
I think also two important points of this program. Anyone can request a tree and can donate a tree. You can request a location and you can request a species too. And there's about 10 different that have been identified as the most viable here within town. The requests will be honored to the extent that they can be ultimately, or to be the tree warden to determine placement and also species, to make sure that we have variety because part of what can be a problem is if you have too many of the same trees and disease hits and you wipe them all out at the same time. So it's a very deliberate approach, certainly with that. And so we want to make sure that we make everyone aware of that. And the goal of this program is ultimately to have within two years a tree surplus, so that we're planting more trees than we're taking down. And I'm confident that with the support of this community, we can have that happen. As I said, there's already a tree gift account, I've spoken with town council, Mullen, on that. So there's already a tree gift account that's set up, so there's no vote required tonight relative to this program. It's a matter of just going forward with it. But I did want to, if I could, bring up Matt Maggiore from Maggiore Companies? And also Mr. Brian McGraal, his attorney. Now back in June of 2017, Mr. Maggiore on behalf of Maggiore Companies had appeared before the town council and we had a final approval relative to the Wakefield Station project on North Ave. And so one of the conditions that I politely requested was 10 trees and the company was gracious enough to do that. We now have this program established and so the Maggiore Companies are looking to make good on their commitment to the town and they are tonight presenting us with a check in the amount of $3,000 for the first 10 trees to be planted in this, with this program. So on behalf of the town, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for that.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
Now, it is technically considered a gift to the town. We had approved it as a condition to the approval back in June of 2017, but I think Tom, probably better practice would dictate we should vote for the acceptance of the gift nonetheless? Would that be appropriate?
That's right.
So I will entertain a motion to accept the gift of $3,000 to go into the communitary program account.
Mr. Chair, just curious, does it make sense to maybe have some discussion about the program? I know I had a couple of questions I wanted to ask before we go to the acceptance of the gift.
Of course, sure, certainly.
So just a couple of questions to clarify. First of all, thank you very much to both of you. Appreciate the support of the town and we'll look forward to graciously accepting the gift in a few minutes. A couple of things I just wanted to clarify. First of all, the new program doesn't in any way change the fact that we do appropriate money to tree planting in town already. I'm assuming, Mr. Fazio, that that work will continue and all of the great work that your team does moves forward with the supplementing that effort?
Yeah, this would be just an addition, just so that we can guarantee that if we, the amount of money that we have, we're sitting on 15,000 right now. So seems like a decent amount, but it's actually, it goes pretty quick when you're purchasing trees, you know, 40 trees at a time and/or like the last season, we had a contractor come in for a few days and he planted, you know, some trees for us. Also, the light department is also working with us too. They are, we've been going around and next week we're actually marking out another 25. We did 25, 20 in the spring and last fall. So their focus is on the wire side of the streets. So we're coming in with shorter varieties that won't impact the wires and won't have to be trimmed so hard. So that leaves us with obviously the other side to put as many large trees that can expand and grow. So but yeah, I think comparative, all of us, it's going to be good to grow.
And just in terms of sort of the work that you're doing now, so obviously the $15,000 that gets appropriated only pays for a certain number of trees. Do you have any challenges in terms of finding contractors who are available to do tree planting? Are we able to, you know, find the work, find the people to do the work that we need to do to expand our plant?
I have one now and we're going to start trying to solicit, see if we have any more out there. It's actually not that common because everybody's so busy during the season, during the planting season. You know, even the nurseries really aren't sitting on a surplus of contractors that are willing to come in and, you know, give you four days uninterrupted on that. But I think with enough phone calls, we certainly can nail down people to help us out if not. So again, if not, then we can just double up on our hours and, you know, we start pulling some Saturdays, which will be required to get the numbers that we're in anyways. If we're talking putting 100 trees in the ground, you know, that's a lot. So I mean, with the utilities that we have nowadays, there's a lot more gas. So obviously out of the requests that we get, you know, they may not, we typically have two trees per house lot is the standard. But nowadays, when we go back, there could be an additional underground utility which may allow for only one, maybe two, you know, we'd spread them out as evenly as we can. So but once we get out there, then we'll know what kind of numbers we can do.
Thank you. Sorry, I just had, yes, one other question. Thank you very much, Mr. Fazio. Just a suggestion actually for the council. So councillor Dinaco and I had the opportunity on Saturday to attend the rededication of J.J. Round Park with members of the Round family. One of the things that we learned from hearing the history of the park and the history of the family is that J.J. Round actually donated quite a few trees to the town, thousands in fact. And one of the things I'd like to suggest as we look at this program is given that example of both concern about the natural resources in the town as well as philanthropy and commitment to Wakefield, maybe that we name this program after the J.J. Round family in honor of what they've done and the inspiration I think that they've given so many of us here in the community. There's a swarm of flies.
Any other questions, comments? Vice Chair.
Dennis, just so people understand the procedure, I understand that someone may want to, you know, have a tree at an exact location and have a certain type of tree and that may not be possible in many situations because they don't understand. So is it that someone donates money and then with the best intentions you will fulfill it if there is an exact wish, but if not, the tree still gets planted? I want people to be, you know, to understand that you shouldn't get to take your money back because you don't get the tree.
Yeah, and we tried this years ago when we had the Trees for Wakefield program and we had that out. We spent a lot of energy going out, people wanted trees in their backyard and the front. We tried to line that out so they know that it's within the right of way. Slightly on a front lawn, we'll do a permission card system. So if it's maybe only four feet back from the sidewalk, we'll allow that. But same thing, whether it's allowed or not, we have to kind of, I'll have to go over there and meet with them and let them know.
Okay. Thank you. It's a great program and thank you Matt so much.
I don't know whether we, you know, like you said, whether they, out of guilt or we just say, we'll put it in as close to proximity.
Whatever works.
That's what we get them and, you know, if they're adamant about getting it back, then, you know, obviously we cover that when we meet with them.
Questions with the other?
I think trees are a wonderful thing, however we can get them in and thank you very much for your donation. My only request, and I know the DPW did this for a number of years, is that we keep account of how many trees were Um, my, my only request, um, and I know the DPOW did this for a number of years, is that we keep account of how many trees we're losing and how many trees we're putting in, uh, uh, whether it's through this program, as well as the publicly funded program, the tax-funded program.
We have that.
So I think we should just keep track of that and we'll, and we'll get a report from you every now and then, so, thank you very much. We'll have a baseline and hopefully we'll be here celebrating net positive trees shortly.
Yep, we have those on, on hand all the time.
Thank you.
Actually, one fun fact relative to, uh, tree, uh, programs is, um, someone at, at this table, um, Mr. Mullen, was actually, um, a pioneer in, in getting a lot of trees planted, literally himself digging the holes, um, back several years ago in a, in a program that he had started as a five oh one C three. So, um, we, thank you for that as well, Tom.
One, one of many things that convinced me I don't want to do manual labor.
It did, it did. Uh, so just trying to, yes.
So, I, um, I just wanna add thank you, and thank you, Dennis, we've worked together on a couple of different policies. Tom, this is probably a question for you, can you just explain, um, the, the fiscal makeup? You said an account already existed, but there is a line item in the budget, and I'm just curious about how the financials of it as we prepare for next budget season?
Sure. Uh, there are two, um, categories here of funding. You're right, there's a line item in the budget, and that money has to be spent, as town meeting says, for the purchase and installation of shade trees. There is also though, the opportunity under chapter forty-four, section fifty-three A, for anybody to make a donation of funds to the town and to earmark the purpose of those funds. If those funds are accepted by the town council here, or the Board of Selectment in any other town, then they are kept in a separate account by the town accountant, and they can be applied only for the purpose donated.
Okay, so if we have no, uh, no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept the gift of three thousand dollars from, um, uh, the, the Maggiore Companies and, and to start with the first ten trees being planted. So, motion.
Second.
Okay, um, motion second, any discussion?
Uh, just to, wanna clarify one thing, the, uh, the naming piece of it, given that this isn't actually something, we're voting on the donation, but not the actual program.
Correct.
Correct.
Um, I would still put my request out there for the naming if we have, uh, consent from the, uh, the members of the council.
Can we circle back to that next meeting?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, so, um, just to keep things moving along. So, all of those, so the motion on the floor is, is the acceptance of the three thousand dollar gift, all those in favor?
Aye.
So again, that's about a five zero, the motion passes. Thank you again very much, we appreciate you coming on this evening.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Item number nine on the agenda is falls under, uh, Committee's, uh, Board and Commission Updates, and, uh, this evening, we, we were scheduled to have, um, a representative from the Conservation Commission here, do we have that representative? Yes, yes. So, if you could, please take the table. So part of, uh, what we're looking to do as a council is have more periodic updates from our, our Committee's, um, count, uh, uh, commissions and boards on what, what they've been up to, what they're doing, and what they have, uh, planned for the, for the future. So we have, you know, a better sense of, of, of what's going on with all of the, the subgroups in town. So with that, if you could just briefly identify yourselves and, good evening.
My name's Jim Luciani. This is, uh...
Hi, I'm Bob Romano.
And I'm Teresa Belmonte.
Elaine Breland, welcome.
Um, I didn't know if I wanted to know, I can read, I was gonna read off what we had accomplished last year, just so you get an idea of what we're doing. Um, for last year, we had twenty-one public hearings, uh, we reviewed twelve notice of intent filings. We had, um, we reviewed three abbreviated notice of resource area delineation, four requests for determination of applicability, and three certificates of complaints, so that was our work for the, for that year. Um, as far as the future goes, we started talking about, um, trails for Wakefield. I mean, there is areas in town where, uh, we have, uh, subdivisions that are separated by, uh, maybe a path of, uh, forest, I could call it forest. Some of these areas have small ponds and stuff like that. There is an area over by, um, Holland Ave? By Holland Ave, right, that, um, that we found the people are using it very regularly. I mean, they've, they've worn the paths out there, so what we're trying to do is get those down on a piece of paper, and we can put this on the, on the website so that people can see, it, 'cause it's not just for the people that live in the area, it's also for the townspeople. We have access to these areas. Recently, um, we traded, uh, one and a half acre lot of land with a private owner and received four acres, which gave us better access to the, uh, to the area. The area I'm talking about is all property that's owned by the town, so we got access in two areas based on, uh, based on that exchange. Um, we had, um, two Boy Scouts, uh, there was two Eagle Projects for the Boy Scouts, and they, they maintained the metal, uh, a, um, a trail for us at, uh, Reedy Meadow, and it's really beautiful. If you go out there, uh, you'd think you're up in New Hampshire, you can't even see the buildings or anything, it's, it's just a great place. Um, we also have, um, off of Montrose Ave, I don't know when, if you guys were around when the Montrose Ave subdivision went in, but we had, uh, we dev- we, we had an agreement with the developer to give us access off of two, you know, uh, two, the, two of the woods in the back because there was a stream going down the middle of these two, like the houses were up high and there was a valley, and in the bottom of the valley is a stream. We found that there's a lot of, uh, wildlife down there too, there's a lot of deer down there, they, they nest down, and you can see them, you know, they flatten out the grass and sleep there at night. Um, but we have access to those areas as well. The other thing we, we've been working on is wildlife corridors, and the way the town is, um, developing, there's, I mean, it seems like there's, any little spot they can find, they put a house. Well, this is really starting to encroach on the wildlife, and you can see that the wildlife are kind of, you, you must see deer in your backyard maybe, or I've seen fox, I've seen turkeys, coyotes, coyotes. I mean, they're all over the place, they need a place to go. They're traveling from, from, um, Montrose, from, um, Breakout Reservation up to Reedy Meadow. And if we can, if, if we can preserve some corridors for them, which we've started to do, we have a project that's on Montrose Ave that we got the developer to agree to give us a, uh, wildlife corridor so that this area will stay undeveloped, and we know that the, the deer are traveling through there 'cause you go down there, you can see them. So, um, we were trying to connect these and, and get, you know, and get something that's not segmented, but something, get a real idea of what their flow is and how we can protect these without, um, causing too much problems for the, for the residents. The other thing, uh, we, of course, we're always interested in the lake cleanup as well, um, and we would like to see the invasive plants removed from the lake. I mean, that's an ongoing project and, um, it's starting to take over in certain spots, so we would love to see that happen. As well as, um, we would like to provide, we would like to see access points, um, along the lake because a lot of other water activities, like the sail, sailboarding and stuff like that, it's better to keep that, those type of activities at certain locations so that we're not, um, causing harm to the banks and other locations. I mean, we don't want people going in, we want people to use the lake, but we don't want it going everywhere and disturbing all the banks. So that was a, um, that was a thought that we had. Um, and we, we thought, we were thinking about maybe some type of notification system for when the algae blooms are high and, uh, just keep people aware of that because it is a problem, and animals do get sick from it, and it can make people sick as well, so. Uh, it wouldn't be a bad idea to get some points around the lake where people know when it's, you know, it requires some testing and stuff like that, but at least we'd be ensuring the safety of the people.
Some of the blooms are quite evident, and, you know, we all have heard the stories of the cyanobacteria issues.
And the other thing we've been working on is, we've, we've made a, uh, tally of all the town-owned property that is vacant, and, uh, we're trying to, um, connect areas that can be put together as, eh, eh, to make a, we, we don't wanna have segmented areas all over town. We're trying to connect everything together so that you can travel from one area to another in the lake and, and, uh, and to do that, we've, we've taken pictures of these, each location, we have a folder that's pretty thick full of these documents. We have a kind of a sign-off sheet that we look at the properties and we assess from a, from a wetlands point of view, which resource it is and how important it is or... And once we tabulate all these, when, if you come to us and say, you know, give us your opinion on whether we, we should sell this property, we can go back to this book and, even if we have to go back and look again, but we can go back to this look and say, well, this is a pretty important area, it's draining into this area or, or, you know, it's, we can just isolate what reasons we'd wanna preserve that property. Or say we, let's say, go ahead and build on, it's not as valuable as, for our point of view, um, as it would be to you. So that's basically what we've been working on, and these projects are long-term projects, I mean, we've been working on them for years, basically. Um, we take our spare time and we're not doing hearings and filings and all the paperwork that goes into putting one of these projects out there. So, um, I, I think that's what you'll be seeing from us for the next few years, okay?
Well, thank you so much, I mean, it really impactful work and, and a lot of these projects are long-term in nature, certainly. Uh, does anyone from the council have any questions? Yes, Councilor Smith Calvin.
Um, thank you so much for being here, 'cause, um, I know the Environmental Sustainability Committee, um, which I serve on, has begun to work with you as well. And I guess, one of my questions for you is just kind of as a matter of practice, how do you interact with the planning board or the ZBA? I mean, you talk a little bit about development and the need to, you know, maintain open spaces, have space for, for wildlife. How, I mean, I guess practically and, and, um, you know, I, how does that work? How does that work?
Well, you know, um, many years ago, we actually used to have meetings, we had dual meetings with the, with the planning board. We would sit with the planning board and have the developer come before us, and it was a nice situation because they'll, they bring up different questions than we would bring up, but it's amazing how much they link together when you're done. Uh, and that's something that we should probably do more often, which we, we don't do. So, uh, I, I would say that we've, we, we could work on that, and, uh, and I think it would be more beneficial to all of us to, to do that.
Yeah, I, I definitely encourage it, I know we just talked about trees, um, I think, you know, the loss of trees in this town is also a direct impact, um, from development, and those questions should be being asked at, at ZBA and, and in other forums, and, and you're the town experts, and I hope that people are turning to you, um, when those questions come up. So, anything we can do or I could do to support that, please let me know.
We'd appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, well, thank you so much.
Okay. Oh, sorry, Councilor Shine.
Thank you very much for coming as well, and, uh, it, it's really enlightening to hear about, uh, the work that you're doing outside of, I think, the hearings, which, which do get a lot of attention. I do have one question on the, uh, the hearings and some of the requests that you get for, uh, conservation variances. Are you seeing certain trends and patterns in terms of the types of, um, uh, petitions that are coming to the Conservation Commission? Are there particular concerns that you have based on, on some of those, uh, some of those, those questions you're getting?
Um, I don't know, I, can you answer that, Rob?
Well, I, I, you know, the time of the big subdivision seems to have passed. So now we're getting smaller, tighter projects, and I think the biggest thing for us is to make sure that we keep that wildlife corridor. Uh, uh, it, it is very important. And the other thing we try and do is, if you're gonna be taking down trees on your property, if you're gonna be putting on a deck or an addition, we try and turn the back part of your property into a feeding area for wildlife. The oth- the other thing is, um, stormwater, to make sure that all of these new structures infiltrated to the ground to try and, uh, mitigate some of the flooding that occurs in town. So, those are all big issues for us.
Okay. Thank you for your commitment, thank you. Again, thank you, we appreciate it. Item number ten is, uh, Police Department Promotions, and I'd welcome up, uh, Chief Scori. Good evening, Chief, thank you for coming.
Good afternoon, thank you for having us. Uh, we're here tonight because on August sixth of this year, we had, uh, two promotions. And it's not common for us to have promotions in a department of our size. Uh, the last time we had somebody promoted to the rank of lieutenant was almost eight years ago, and the last time somebody was promoted to the rank of sergeant was almost three and a half years ago. And because we only hire the, uh, the most qualified people, we have the best and the brightest. And that really comes to shine when, when we have a competition for promotions. So we had some great candidates, very bright people, a lot, a lot of people that bring some really great things to the table, but what stood out, uh, at the head of the class was Lieutenant Joe Anderson, formerly Sergeant Anderson, and Sergeant Matt Powers, formerly Officer Powers. Um, I'll start with Lieutenant Anderson, he, uh, served as a sergeant here for a couple of years, and he was promoted to the rank of lieutenant to fill the vacancy that was created when I became chief. Uh, to tell you a little bit about Joe, uh, he's been with us since two thousand and eleven. Prior to working with us, he was a patrolman with the towns of Newberry and Salisbury. Uh, he has a bachelor's degree in criminology from Suffolk University, a master's degree in criminal justice from UMass Lowell. Uh, is a supervisor, is a sergeant, he was responsible as the keeper of the records for the department breath test machine, and he also serves as the department's lead Taser instructor. He's worked as an instructor at the Police Academy, teaching report writing, and he took the lead, lead on field training for new officers upon academy graduation. His new responsibilities as a lieutenant will include overseeing the entire night division, scheduling, training, handling recruit officers, and most importantly, he is now the chairman of the Traffic Advisory Committee. So congratulations to him on that. Uh, for Sergeant Powers, he joined the Wakefield Police Department in two thousand and fourteen. And previous to working for us, he was a dispatcher with the Peabody Police Department. He has a bachelor's and master's degree in criminal justice from Sacred Heart University. He was a hard-working patrol officer, and he shined from the start of his career here with the Wakefield PD. He's been a great mentor to his fellow officers. He steps into a new role as a line supervisor, or he, he will be responsible for the supervision of a patrol shift. As a supervisor, Matt will assume additional duties over time. Knowing his worth ethic, I'm sure he'll do fine and handle them tremendously. So, I'd like to welcome them as new supervisors, uh, look forward to working with them for a long time to come, and, and they're great people.
Thank you. Well, congratulations to you both, does anyone have any comments?
Congratulations, and we're glad to have you, uh, in the community.
I do have to add one comment, uh, Matt got married on Saturday.
Hey, congratulations.
Thank you.
And I had to ask him if he put on, I, I emailed him a few weeks ago that he had to be here tonight, so when he showed up tonight, I had to ask him if he put off the, uh, the honeymoon, and he said no, so luckily we fit that in, so.
We leave tomorrow.
Oh, God.
That, that is commitment, though.
Yeah, it is.
Yes.
Well, thank, thank you both, uh, congratulations, and we look forward to many years of you continuing on, on in our department.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Congratulations. Uh, Chief, uh, we'll continue actually, Chief, with you, yep. So, our next item is, is item number, uh, eleven A, and that is, um, a, a brief, uh, update on downtown safety and supports.
Our mental health clinician and Officer Randall, they will join me up here. I have Officer Amy Randall with us here, uh, our mental health clinician, Jen Wachowski, and Deputy Chief Craig Calabrese. So, we're here tonight because we understand there's been some concern with, uh, some of the people who are in our downtown area, and we want to address those concerns and let you know how as a police department, we're handling those concerns. But first, I'd like to make a statement that I wanna make it clear that the Wakefield Police Department is absolutely committed to protecting the constitutional and civil rights of all individuals in our community. We will not be biased or discriminatory. Doing so will be detrimental to the valued relationship between the police department and the community we faithfully serve. Stereotyping or bias-based profiling is illegal, ineffective, counterproductive, and will not happen here in Wakefield. So with that being said, now, within the past year, we've seen an increase in the number of individuals in our community who are suffering, suffering from homelessness. And in addition to the homeless population that we have here, we have a large number of group homes for people who are dealing with mental health issues, as well as two-rooming houses, and many of the people from these two groups who see every day in our downtown area. And as a result of that, we, the police, receive numerous complaints, and these complaints include, about, they're about groups gathered on the benches, being disruptive, public drinking, panhandling, and harassing behavior. But sadly, the majority of the complaints we receive are about the mere presence of these less fortunate folks. The police department is taking a humanistic approach and viewing these people as individuals with names and stories. Making arrests is usually not an effective response. The national statistics show that sixty-six percent of homeless suffer from some form of mental illness, eighty-eight percent suffer from alcohol abuse, and fifty-nine percent from drug abuse. I believe those statistics are an accurate reflection of our homeless population here in Wakefield. And a long-term solution must be a multifaceted approach that involves social services and our mental health partners. Anyone committing a serious crime will be held accountable, but arrests for minor offenses should be a last resort. Treatment, counseling, and other services are far more effective. What has been a challenge is that many people are service-resistant, especially those suffering from both mental illness and substance abuse. They require multiple contacts before agreeing to accept assistance. The national average for the number of contacts before someone will help, accept assistance is seventeen. is 17. For some, homeless is a lifestyle. And for many of the people here, they're originally Wakefieldians from birth. This is their home and this is where they want to be. We've made arrests when necessary, but people need to understand that our officers, our mental health clinician, our recovery coach, and our family services officer have spent countless hours helping our less fortunate. They've worked diligently to help those who are willing to go into substance abuse facilities. They have worked to get others mental health counseling. Some have received housing vouchers and they have assisted family members with court-ordered treatment. In the colder months, we offer transportation to a warming center at night, and for those not willing to go, we offer blankets, clean blankets, and socks. There are people that come to the police station regularly seeking help because they've received our help in the past and know we will do our best for them. Not all cases are met with success, but we will be persistent and continue to offer services for those who are in need. So to tell you a little bit about what we do here, one of the things that we're doing is we're currently working on a monthly meeting that will bring all the providers together to discuss high-risk cases. These meetings will include Elliott, Mystic Valley, Elliott Homeless Outreach, Veteran Services, and the Department of Mental Health. The focus is on those who are most in need. At this point, I'd like to ask Deputy Chief Calabrese to elaborate on these monthly meetings.
Good evening, Town Council. Thanks for having us. Since 2012, we've been bringing providers together to discuss best practices and best treatment options for those in need. We were one of the first grant-funded CIT co-responder police models by the Department of Mental Health, and we've had numerous departments seek our input over the years as they look to begin these types of programs in their communities. This is an area that we have been leaders, not followers, and something that has woven itself into the fabric of our department. I believe that is due to the fact that these issues require a high level of patience, care, and compassion, which is an area that all of our officers excel at. Through our partners, we are working towards a new meeting schedule that will bring these providers together with a few new strategic additions to meet every month to discuss our most high-risk cases. This will serve to enhance, not replace, our current system and the truly amazing outreach and referral work that is done here on a daily basis. For each one of these very busy partner agencies, time is short. Fortunately, through the strong relationships that we have established over the years, the increased time that we requested was readily accepted. With this said, these are not simple cases with simple answers that may be solved in a few meetings. For many, these have been long-term or even lifelong situations. Our clinician Jennifer has had successful cases that have taken months and sometimes years of persistence. But for as long as we are able to know their faces, their names, and the best means of communication for each individual, the opportunity will be there. Thank you.
I'd like to ask both Jen and Amy to share some of their experiences and just brief details on some of the cases that they've put a tremendous amount of time into.
Hello, thank you for having me. So my name is Jennifer. I'm a clinician. I've been with the department for, I think, just shy of seven years. So I've got to really know the community and the people that are in the community. I want to say that my job has changed exponentially throughout the past seven years, from what I initially started to do to what I'm doing now. I help a wide variety of people with a wide variety of things, which wasn't necessarily the case initially. One of the things that we do is we work a lot proactively with people, which is kind of difficult, you know, to quantify and to see sometimes what we're doing behind the scenes. But I do work very closely with all of the officers in the department. I know every single one of them. Every single officer refers to me. I do get the opportunity to work a lot closer with Officer Rando and with our recovery coach, Tracy, as a lot of our cases overlap. So as I said, it's kind of hard to quantify some of the things that we're doing in the community. But I'm just going to try to, as vaguely as I can, because I need to respect the privacy of the people that I'm working with, just kind of a broad view of what we do do to help the people in the community. So I apologize that it is a little vague, but I do want to respect their privacy. So I work alongside the officers to help de-escalate individuals that are actually having a crisis in their homes, out in the community. I help people find outpatient providers if they don't have them or other less restrictive levels of care. I help facilitate and coordinate transfers to detoxes, to inpatient hospitalizations for psychiatric reasons. I help refer people to, you know, Mystic Valley Elder Services, to the Department of Developmental Disabilities, the Department of Mental Health, and to our PATH program, which is our homeless outreach program for this community. So I do refer people to that regularly. I also, we also try to meet people where they're at. So what we want to do is try to help people in the moment for what they identify as their needs. This may seem as, you know, counterintuitive because you can look at somebody and say, I know that they need this, this would be helpful for them. However, that might not be what they want in the moment. So what I'll do is help them with the needs that they identify, that they want, that could be, you know, helping them get insurance, helping them get, you know, food, having a place to stay for the evening, helping them get benefits, different things that are going to help them in the moment. What this does is this plants the seed that they know where to go to get help when they're ready to get help. So people might not be able or willing at this moment to change in the way that other people would like them to change, but once you give them, you know, help and assistance with the things that they want, they're more willing to come back to you. And I get people who come back one day later, or I've had people come back five years later and say, hey, you helped me with this one thing, can you help me with this going forward? So, and we do have people that are in the community that are at elevated or higher risk or don't want services, but they need it because they're either going to cause harm to themselves, harm to others, or they just can't take care of themselves in the moment. When that happens, we, you know, we will outreach to friends and family to try to help them with that resource first. We will then also outreach to their community providers if they have them, advocate for the individual by going, I've actually gone over to the hospitals, over to Melrose, Wakefield, to, you know, to help advocate for an individual while at the hospital, speaking to the social workers, speaking to the nurses, the doctors at the facility. And when we have to, we try to avoid this, but we try to, we'll also work with the courts and we will try to seek assistance with the courts to get people help through the court system. So I can't give, you know, specific details on exact cases, but I can say some examples of things that we have done. Officer Rando and I have gone above and beyond for some people in the community, trying to get them access to services where other providers might not have been able to kind of go quite that far, put that much effort in. One individual I worked with, I worked with the family members of an individual who had mental illness and was wrongfully evicted from their place. I worked with the housing courts over several weeks to help this individual regain their housing back and then also hook them up with community providers so that they could be followed, so that the situation of them losing their housing wouldn't happen again in the future. And we've also had several people who we've worked with, family members and themselves, getting them into detoxes, treatment, and service, support services in the community, getting them longer care treatment, and then eventually had to go through courts to get them court-mandated treatment. But we don't just stop when one thing fails. We look at other options and alternatives that we can do to help people. If one thing fails, try a different approach, try a different approach, and we keep trying to help these people as we go on. So I'm going to leave this off to Officer Rando, who can kind of explain a few more examples.
And I want to talk about a case that Jen and I probably worked on together for about 11 months. It was an individual in the community whose circumstances had recently changed. He had a place to live but was in jeopardy of losing that. I helped work with him to bring down some of his bills. He was paying a large amount for health insurance and I brought him down to a local hospital where someone would help him with an intake form for Mass Health, so he was able to get more affordable health insurance. I was able to help him and assist him contact his mortgage company and link him with someone to help bring down his mortgage because he was eligible due to his new financial situation. We were able to get him supports in the community that he qualified for that he wasn't aware of. He was in jeopardy of losing his home, but we were able to keep that for him and then also get him the supports that he needs. So now he has a team of people that work with him and that's one of our success stories. I know, as everyone has mentioned, we are willing to drive some to detox. I've driven folks who have wanted to go to detox probably seven times. I've had individuals who do not have a cell phone who are looking for shelter come to me and I will make phone calls for them. And I'm also allowed to transport them out of the community to a shelter if they are seeking that. As Jennifer said, sometimes people can be a little resistant to services, but anytime there is an incident, I go through the logs every shift that I'm in, whether it's, you know, someone had called because they were concerned about someone in the community, there was an interaction where police were involved, or even sometimes if there is an arrest made and it's around substance use. I always call those individuals and follow up with them. If I'm not able to get them by phone, I'll send them a text. If they don't text me back, I send them a letter. So we try to outreach to everyone to let them know that the services do exist and, you know, we hope people call us back so we can offer our help.
So as you can see, we deal with a number of complex issues that go well beyond traditional policing. And I think we are far ahead of many police departments in the way we handle these issues. So with that being said, we're doing all we can. We do yeoman's work here. And it isn't just Amy and Jen. We have, 35% of our police department is trained in critical incident response, which is a big deal. That percentage is quite high. I think the national standard is maybe 20%. So this is where I ask for help. We're handling the complex issues. We need some help with what I think are some pretty simple solutions in the meantime. And the first I'm going to start with is the benches that are downtown. The benches are an issue for us. The way they're currently configured, they're inviting people to congregate into groups and that is part of the issue here. I think if we considered reconfiguring the benches downtown, separating them, putting them by themselves, maybe facing them all in the same direction, I don't want to go down the route of eliminating them right now because I know that there was a lot of hard work and effort put into putting those benches in the square and they had all good intentions with their placement. But I think we do need to consider the current configuration and changing that. The other thing that I would ask is that this council consider regulation on the sale of nip bottles of alcohol. The city of Chelsea has an ordinance prohibits the sale of 50 milliliter bottles of alcohol. And after a year of having that ordinance in place, they've seen some significant results. And in a recent article in the newspaper, the results that they cited, many of their minor crimes related to alcohol have been eliminated, reduction in alcohol-related ambulance responses, fewer people taken into protective custody, and a reduction in littering. Those are all big issues. Those are quality of life issues that we see downtown. And we're doing our part and this is where I ask for help. So thank you for having us tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, everyone. Does anyone on the council have questions for anyone on, like, sure?
So you're doing beyond what other departments are doing. You're, Amy and Jen are unsung heroes. My God, everything you're doing, people in this town don't understand the amount of effort that you're putting in. So thank you so much. And Chief, you're leading a department, the humanistic approach, we couldn't have asked for anything more, and you're keeping us safe. As for your two requests, I'm all in. I think reconfiguring the benches makes sense. And I know some of the more aggressive behavior that has happened has happened with that and the drinking. I'm also in for nip bottles, getting rid of those. Steve Mayo brought that up at our meeting when we all, when some of us met. I know he was all in for it. He was the one, the first person I heard suggest it, but you as well in following Chelsea's lead. So if you think your expertise suggests that those two things would help, I'm good.
Thank you.
Councilor Butt?
So thank you all for coming here. And Chief Scory, I hope you find a way of how you started to publish that and get that spread because I think you hit on what your department does and we as a town and town councils try to do in town. I thank you. Not only do they do above and beyond, they're a statewide example and Jen's received awards on the work that she does. So thank you for coming here and telling us how we can support you. I know a couple of us counselors met with you guys, you know, when this first became an issue and it was raised at one of our counselor meetings. And to know that there's already monthly meetings in place is great. Deputy Chief, thank you for doing that. I will say the one thing that you didn't mention, and I'm going to throw it out there, is that Jen is part-time. And someone of her caliber being part-time, it's something for us to explore as it's funded by the town and making it a full-time position with all the work that you do. So I'm adding a third item on your list.
That would be great. Jen is a part of our police department, which may not be a sworn officer, but she's as important as anybody else in our department.
Agreed.
Councilor Chines?
Thank you. Thank you as well. I want to echo, you know, Counselor Santos and Counselor Butt in their comments, you know, really praising you for the approach that you've taken. You know, as someone who works in healthcare, I'm particularly excited about really the care management approach, the case management approach I see Deputy Chief Calabrese that you've talked about in terms of getting the agencies together and talking really sort of case by case, how do we address, you know, some folks in our community that unfortunately have a lot of challenges in their lives that many of us are fortunate not to have. I do have a question and then want to comment briefly on a couple of the suggestions. The first question I wanted to ask is while you are doing yeoman's work and you are doing great work, it feels like there's a constraint with sort of the resources available to get to the root causes of some of the challenges that the individuals you're working with are facing. You know, you've talked about bringing people to detox, but that doesn't necessarily mean there's long-term treatment available. You know, trauma is something that, you know, probably underlies a lot of, you know, the substance abuse issues, the homeless issues, the behavioral health issues that you're seeing. Talk to me a little bit about sort of your perception of the resources available to get at some of those root causes and whether there's anything you would see as a town government that we could do from sort of a policy or resource standpoint to help address that.
I'll let Jen talk about the resources, but what I want to start with is we, Amy said she's taken the same person to a detox seven times. The person who's going to detox has to make that decision, that this is it for them. This is the time now that they're going to get clean. We hope that every time we take them, that it's that time, but that's up to them. I'll let Jen fill you in on the resources available.
I would say that there's definitely a lack of resources. There's a lack of intermediary resources. So you can send somebody to a psychiatric hospital or you can give them outpatient. There's not a lot of in-between, which is more of a structural issue that's kind of more on our state than it necessarily is on an individual level. So it's kind of a much bigger issue than I can kind of grasp at this exact moment. But if we're also talking about some of the individuals that we're working with in the community who might not have homes. I have a full-time job, I have two master's degrees, and housing for me is extremely difficult as well as a single individual. So I can understand what it's like if you just got out of a detox, you don't have a job, and you're looking for an apartment, you need first-last security and sometimes a broker's fee to move into certain places. So it makes it extremely difficult for these people and I'm not sure how the town can help with that component, but I know that those are some of the barriers that are definitely out there for people, trying to find employment, trying to find, you know, housing when the housing market is extremely, I don't know, it's astronomical, it's very, very tough. So I can't imagine what it's like to be somebody who's kind of, you know, trying to get, pick their life back up and then have these barriers of how do you get first-last security, how do you get, you know, references, how do you get these different things and resources? So, you know, I'm trying to think of like what the town can do. It's kind of a tough question because it's a multi-layered situation, so I don't know.
Jen has assisted some people with getting housing vouchers and the issue that came up with was they have to be sober to go into that housing. And again, trying to help those people keep themselves sober is an issue.
Or as simple as having a cell phone. So if some people get out, they don't have a cell phone to coordinate with somebody about their housing or to get a job or to follow up with something. It can be very difficult if they don't have, you know, the basic resources.
Thank you. And just maybe on sort of the suggestions, Chief, that you made, fully supportive of reconfiguring the benches, I feel that that's a straightforward and relatively sort of low-effort way that we can try to improve the quality of life downtown. I know that there was some controversy with the Chelsea policy around nips and there was something going back to the ABCC. I don't know, Chief, if you know about that or if we bring this back to the council, if we could talk through that and certainly, you know, for a town council, I'd love to hear Mr. Mullins' take on that as well. You know, I'm supportive of the idea in theory, but obviously we also need to make sure we're not getting ahead of what the state allows us to do.
If I may, there are multiple possible ways of doing this. One, you've heard that the city of Chelsea used an ordinance. Cities have ordinances, towns have bylaws. The big difference, though, is when a city passes an ordinance, it becomes the law. When a town passes a bylaw, it doesn't become effective until the Attorney General approves it. So the fact that Chelsea has this ordinance doesn't necessarily mean that the Attorney General would approve a bylaw of the same type for us. Another way of doing it might be a board of health regulation. There are few boards at the municipal level that have the kind of sweeping power that courts give boards of health. And finally, your board is the Alcohol Regulating Board in Wakefield. So we might use the power of regulation by you in your capacity as the So, we might use the power of regulation by you in your capacity as the alcohol authorizing licensing board. But I'm gonna have to look into it. Chelsea is the only community that I've heard of so far that has done this.
Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Just quickly, also wanted to reiterate my thanks for being here and just showing so much dignity to our fellow citizens who are having challenges. And I fully support all three. I guess we're up to three now of the items that you need to be more effective. I also wanna remind everyone that if they do feel unsafe or they do see a problem, that they should not take it into their own hands and should call you. And so, if they feel unsafe, certainly call our police department and let you handle it.
Absolutely.
Well, Chief, Deputy Chief, Officer Rando, and Jen, thank you for this presentation tonight. This is certainly an ongoing, you know, issue that we'll be discussing as a body and certainly working with you and partnering on solutions.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Item number eleven A, eleven B, excuse me, is traffic advisory recommendations. And presenting those would be Lieutenant Anderson, I believe. Is that right? Yes.
Feel like we just spoke. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, the Traffic Advisory Committee met Friday, August twenty-third, and we discussed a host of issues. But out of that meeting, we're requesting approval for some of the following recommendations. So, I'll go through them one by one, and then if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them as best I can. The first is a group of Herbert Street residents requested two no-parking-heat-a-corner signs that intersect Bennett Street. There's some tough visibility issues there. That street is very narrow. Bennett Street too kinda has a bit of a sightline issue too, so it's tough to see oncoming traffic. So, they're requesting that there. That would be the southern side of the driveway at sixty-eight Bennett, which is actually on Herbert. That'd be one sign. The other one would be directly across in the area fifteen B Herbert Street. So, that would cover both sides of the street. Very narrow. You can only kind of pretty much get one vehicle down at a time, and they're having a difficult time when a delivery vehicle comes down to try to make a delivery, or if they have to try to come out onto Bennett Street, they're having a tough time seeing oncoming traffic. So, that would be our request for Herbert Street there for those two signs.
All right. So, I think we should take them, we'll take them one by one then. So, I'll entertain a motion for the signage as described by Lieutenant Anderson.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Chines, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Any discussion relative to this request? So, the motion before you then is the addition of the signs as outlined by Lieutenant Anderson at the, based on the recommendation of the Traffic Advisory Committee. All those in favor? Seeing a unanimous vote, the motion carries five-zero.
So, the second was a request again from Herbert Street, and this one was pretty simple. The residents, they request new street signage to reflect that the street is actually a split street. So, some of the numbers are on one side and it's not accessible from the other, which causes issues again with delivery vehicles, sometimes emergency responders. We have a contract ambulance company, so they may not be familiar right away with the fact that it's a split street. May save them some time getting to an emergency. So, that's been used pretty effectively in some other areas in town. So, our recommendation would be that it would be installed to read Herbert Street, numbers fifteen through twenty-seven on one side. And then on the other side would be Herbert Street and the thirty-nine to forty-two. Just properly identify that road. It's pretty unique there.
I have any questions for Lieutenant Anderson. Counselor Chines?
I might be incorrect on this, but my understanding is Herbert Street actually has three sections. I don't know what the signage looks like for the numbers two through ten.
As far as I know, Herbert Street, you access one half from Bennett and the other half from Hart Street. I don't know of a third section. It's an old paper road that's divided in the middle.
It may maybe then be just something where it's kind of a house there, not actually a road, but at least looking at it on a map.
We can look at it again. I don't think there's three sections to it, though.
They may have changed some of those numbers with nine-one-one mapping years ago. I think they may have had a different side there, and then may have referred to it as the most adjacent street, so.
I would just ask that you take a look at it. If we are gonna move ahead and do the numbered signs for those two sections, that there's another component that's numbered differently.
If there's one house that's off on its own, we would certainly number that as well just for accessibility.
Great. Thank you.
So, seeing other questions, I will entertain a motion relative to the signage on Herbert Street reflecting that the street is in fact split. Moved by Counselor Smith-Galvin, seconded by Counselor Chines. Any discussion? Seeing none of the motion before you is the addition of signage on Herbert Street reflecting that the street is in fact split number-wise. All those in favor? Seeing a vote of five to zero, the motion carries unanimously.
For the next topic for discussion is to improve some of the parking in town, which has been a big undertaking. And for this next section here, we have a few maps for you to kind of see exactly what we're talking about. We've received a lot of complaints from merchants and residents and visitors about a lack of certain types of parking. So, our recommendation would be to increase some of the four-hour merchant parking spots. And the first street would be Richardson Ave. So, if coming from North Ave on the left side, on the north side, starting ten feet from the fire hydrant, this is in the area of Frank's Auto and the gas station there. The first sign would be four-hour merchant parking. There would be an arrow, which I think as we go forward, the Traffic Advisory Committee would recommend that parking be a little more simplified, which is an issue we run into now with the signage really not being all that clear. So, we would recommend that we try to, number one, limit the amount of signs that we have to use, but also make it very clear that with a DPW, it doesn't have to spend an excessive amount of money putting up signs every few feet. But we also wanna get the message across to people that may not be familiar in town where they can and can't park. So, for this example, we'd have the first sign there by that fire hydrant. It would say four-hour merchant parking. There'd be an arrow pointing east. The spots would continue heading east just before the first driveway of number forty-one Richardson Ave. There would be another sign there pointing back west. And that would allocate, I believe, approximately six spots. Six spots there.
So, I think it may make sense to take these individually if we could. So, are there any questions for Lieutenant Anderson on this particular request?
I may have missed this. Are all of these spots painted?
So, these spots are not currently painted, no.
Is that something we should think about? It seems like we could get more in possibly.
So, I think in certain areas of town, painted spots would be important. But in this particular area, I think it's, you can fit in a good number of cars there without it being painted. I wouldn't wanna restrict it by painting spots there.
Any other questions? So, in that case, I'll entertain a motion for the addition of four-hour and merchant parking as described by Lieutenant Anderson on Richardson Avenue. Moved by Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Chines. Any discussion? Seeing none of the motion before you is the addition of the four-hour merchant parking on Richardson Avenue as described. All those in favor? Seeing a vote of five to zero, the motion carries unanimously.
The next is Main Street in Greenwood. Hearing some of the complaints from some of the business owners and through our parking enforcement. Greenwood's looking for some four-hour merchant parking spots. They feel a little bit left out with some of the new restrictions. They'd like a little additional time there where needed for the businesses down there, and also be able to have a place where merchants can park. So, for this section, heading southbound on Main Street, near number eight ninety-three, which is Batten Brothers sign, we've changed the existing spots there from the first marked parking spot. It's just South of Forest Street. Those are currently marked because that's on Main Street. So, we would change those existing nine parking spots. Similar to what we're requesting on Richardson would be, a sign would be posted four-hour merchant parking, starting at the first spot that's already marked out. Removing and changing existing signage there. There'd be an arrow pointing southbound. There would be another sign by the Batten Brothers driveway that would be replaced to reflect the change. And then there'd be a third sign at the end of the ninth spot with an arrow pointing back north. So, you'd have three signs covering that area. It would give Batten Brothers a little bit of relief. They requested some additional spots for their business. I know some of the businesses south of Batten Brothers needed some help too. So, that'd be three signs there, and that would give nine additional parking spots on that side.
Do you have any questions relative to that request of the Traffic Advisory Committee?
Sherry, can you just tell us, since you're the keeper of the merchant parking?
Yeah.
Stickers, like how many, so like for Batten Brothers, are they buying it per vehicle? Like how many passes are they purchasing?
Yes. So, as of right now, there's no restriction on how many a business can have. So, we just go, we just need like the employee's name to match up to the number. So, they can get, you know, some, like some nail salons have come in to get eight for their employees, you know. So, right now, there's no restriction on how many.
How many one business can do?
Right.
And people in Greenwood are purchasing? Merchants in Greenwood are purchasing them?
Yes, they are. Yep.
Can I ask, what impact would this have on customer parking in the area that you're talking about, Lieutenant Anderson?
So, I think it would improve customer parking for longer-term parking spots there. I think having an addition of four-hour parking in some areas of town is, it's definitely wanted, and I think it is needed. There's some complaints that people don't feel like they can spend as much time in certain areas because of the two-hour restriction, even though they could move their car to a different spot. They would prefer to have some option there to be able to have a four-hour spot nearby. I think it would help the business owners too to be able to load and unload and not have to take up a spot necessarily directly in front of their business. Again, this is Greenwood that we're talking about, so they really don't have too much as it is right now. It's just a two-hour restriction. There's even still some old signage there that's seven A to eleven A, which was kind of to address other issues in the past. But I think it would help them to have a little bit of both for them and their customers.
One of the biggest complaints that we've heard from business owners requesting long-term parking for their customers is basically the hair salons. There are a lot of people that go in and they need more than two hours, and they're under some, I don't have that problem. But they're under some kind of a device that they just can't get up and go out and move their car. So, they're requesting parking for longer than two hours. I wish I had that problem, but I don't, so.
Chief, I think for the benefit of the audience, we'd like you to keep going with that explanation.
So, the four-hour parking certainly helps certain businesses, and we wanna accommodate everybody. That's the goal.
I guess my only question with this is relative to the merchant piece of it. Are we gonna have all-day merchant parking? Say, I'm thinking that area in front of the Honeydew, in front of Fringe, in front of the Savings Bank, you know, the pizza, et cetera.
The nine spaces don't extend that far beyond Batten Brothers?
Okay.
And that leaves the rest of that area with two-hour parking.
Okay.
I believe the spots there come right up to the Savings Bank just before. I was careful not to infringe on that section there, especially the bank too, because you wanna keep that open for people to be able to get in and out quickly and not have to, not find parking there. So, it would go just before the bank, and I think it could help in that area.
I think one thing for us to keep in mind with this is we're talking about signage. And so, we can try out different options, but it's a really fluid via parking situation. And so, if we find that this is not working, it's an easy comeback to us and making modifications with some very minimal effort. So, I find a lot downtown, there's a lot of opportunities there to maybe think about how we tweak things a little bit. And it's still a work in progress, certainly.
It's been a good learning curve for all of us, especially with the parking enforcement now giving us active feedback every day.
And on that too, I think it's also important to underscore that parking downtown used to be one hour. Parking is now two hours as a matter of right for anything. So, if people are concerned about parking, we've, the council has already approved twice as much time in ordinary course, and we're trying to build the four hours where appropriate. Anyone have any other questions? If not, entertain a motion relative to the four-hour slash merchant parking in Greenwood as described by Lieutenant Anderson and essentially in front of Batten Brothers at seven ninety-three, I believe, Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Chines. Any discussion?
Just, I'm trying to remember as I live right there. Are they not supposed, is there a time when they're actually not supposed to park on that side? I know it's on the other side. I'm trying to think in front of.
No. It's only on the, it's only on the east side.
Yeah.
In front of eight ninety-four Main Street.
Okay.
Between eight ninety-four and the Hallmark Building.
Right. I couldn't remember if we did it on the other side also. Okay.
And the only reason we did that on the east side was because of the left-turning traffic on the Forest Street.
Yep. Yep. So, I would just ask, since the Hallmark, Melrose Wakefield Healthcare Building went in, that we just monitor going that side as well because traffic does back up on both sides, especially when the train comes. So, just something for the Traffic Advisory Committee to keep an eye on. And then also, Sherry, I'm gonna ask that we get updates of how many merchants are getting how many paths because I don't envision any other business parking there. And so, we could potentially just make nine new spots for one business. And so, I just wanna be cognizant of that.
I think we should keep in mind, it may be nine merchant spots, or it may be nine four-hour spots, or it might be five and four, something to that. I think it depends on how they're used. But being able to, and I would imagine that parking enforcement would be able to let us know if that's all-day parking in those nine spots going forward.
Parking enforcement's been giving us some great feedback, things that we really weren't aware of before. And we're currently updating some pavement markings, signs that had arrows not in the greatest direction. So, they've been terrific helping us out, getting some things straightened.
All right. So, with that, there is a motion that has been seconded. We've had discussions. There's not further discussion. I'll entertain then a vote on the addition of the nine spots as described by Lieutenant Anderson on Main Street in Greenwood. All those in favor? Seeing a unanimous five-zero vote, the motion carries.
This next section is Main Street in Greenwood again. It's the east side that we were just talking about of Main Street, starting just north of the area of eight sixty-two Main Street. It would continue heading northbound and ending just prior to the area of seven eighty Main Street. That would change the existing regulations that we were just discussing, that they currently read no parking from seven A to eleven A. That would change it to four-hour merchant parking. The current parking sign that's right by the bus stop is kinda confusing, so we would eliminate that sign altogether. But basically, we'd be switching out old signage for new signage for that four-hour merchant parking, giving people a little more time there, and merchants that do wanna walk to their business and do wanna honor having some space in front of their business, they could walk from that point forward to their business.
The history of that seven AM to eleven AM restriction has to do with commuters. And back when Subaru dealership was there, many of their employees parked on the street. So, that's why that restriction was put in in the first place.
Any questions? Counselor Smith-Galvin?
This area, it's not used a lot for parking right now, probably because of that seven AM, eleven AM. But there are a lot of driveways, and maybe even more than when that restriction was put in. There's been some new building there. I would just wanna be cognizant of not having people park so close to the driveways that they can't get out. There's limited visibility. There's a curve there. Maybe this is where painted spots might help.
I was gonna say, I think this is where pavement markings would be helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So, Counselor Chines?
Just a quick question. So, the history of the seven AM to eleven AM was specifically for the Subaru dealership employees. There wasn't any traffic reason or safety reason why we needed to restrict traffic then?
They didn't have any space on their lot with the cars they had for sale and their employees, so the employees parked on the street. And once we imposed the pay-for-parking and the planes on the west side, then people started to park on the other side.
Yep. Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the traffic advisory recommendation of four-hour slash commuter, four-hour slash merchant parking, eight sixty-two, just north of eight sixty-two Main Street in Greenwood.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Chines. Any discussion? Seeing none of the motion before you is the approval of the four-hour slash merchant parking just north of eight sixty-two Main Street, Greenwood. All those in favor? Seeing a unanimous vote of five-zero, the motion carries.
Next is Oak Street. It's on the north side of the street if coming from main by the church. So, we'd add some additional four-hour merchant parking for some of the businesses on the southern side of Greenwood there. On the north side of the street, starting from the church walkway, there's currently a no-parking sign. From that point, heading east, there would be an additional, there's an additional two-hour parking sign there at number eight Oak Street. That would be changed to reflect the four-hour merchant parking there. Again, we'd use the signage with the arrows to kind of use. Uh again, we'd use the uh the signage with the arrows to kind of use uh make some good use out of a couple of signs there. And that would uh that would give us a few more spots in that area there.
Counselor Chines.
Uh ju- thank you, just a a quick thing, I think again, another area where I think pavement markings would be helpful, just looking at the the image from that. Uh that you provided us, uh it looks like it's a fairly narrow shoulder painted off right now and so it doesn't look. It isn't clear sort of looking at it that's necessarily a set of parking spots, probably something where if we can clarify where those spots are once they're signed out. I think that'd be helpful.
Alright, with that, I'll entertain a motion um for the approval of the signage along Oak Street on the north side as described by Lieutenant Anderson.
So moved, second.
Moved by Chair San- Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Chines, any discussion on this? Alright, seeing none, the motion on uh before you is the approval of the Oak Street uh north side parking signage as described by Lieutenant Anderson, all those in favor? Seeing a vote of five to zero, the motion carries unanimously.
The uh next item is based on uh some complaints that we've received and that's uh. The recommendation of making the Smith Street uh public parking lot all four hour merchant parking. Um we've received a lot of complaints from business owners and residents, they're looking for a more uh centralized, longer term parking solution for their customers. And their employees, uh some of the four hour parking now is a little bit on the outskirts of uh the downtown area. And they're looking for something a little more centralized.
Do we have any questions for Lieutenant Anderson on this?
So this one I have a little um question problem with. If it was all four hour parking, I might be fine, it's the merchant part of it that makes me hesitate. And um I heard a complaint just recently about um one of the stylists in the salon. Who was complaining about having to walk really far to um Artichokes. No, I'm sorry, that's not far.
So so one of the, I I didn't mean to interrupt you, uh one of the complaints we've heard primarily from business owners is. Cause we've designated the Water Street parking lot for merchant parking, uh we've heard concerns about this time of year, it's okay. What happens in the winter, it's darker when we leave work, it the sidewalks will be icy. The parking lot isn't well lit, even though we've added some lighting there.
And I I absolutely appreciate those concerns, but for someone who parks in a T parking lot, who walks to the train and then walks into Boston in the dark. A lot of us don't park right outside where we work and we can't and I understand people get into the habit of that. But to me, that parking lot is not enough of a um impediment for us to change the Smith Street parking. When we know we're gonna change that anyways, that that parking lot is going to be um completely reconstructed. So I am really hesitant to make that four hour merchant, because that. Um four hour indoor merchant, because my concern is it it's really gonna be all merchant.
Could we consider if we didn't do the whole parking lot, even half the parking lot?
Counselor Chines.
Uh thank you, uh so I I I share that concern as well and I I think um. Part of my concern is, you know, we've had sort of the the new parking program in place for only about two months. Uh we're collecting data through the parking enforcement officers, but I don't know that we've really taken time to study that and. Um I I do have concerns that, you know, this is this is a much bigger deal than, you know, four spots on Richardson Ave, I mean, this is thirty some odd spots. Um it is a location that's central for a lot of customers that are using different businesses in town. There are a lot of healthcare providers in the Wakefield Building that have people going in and out there. Um I I would maybe request that we uh table this and consider a couple of different options within the context of data as well. What kind of information can we get from parking enforcement? What kind of information can we get on usage and turnover in that part of downtown? So that maybe we can think about whether a half and half approach makes sense or if there's some other way to think about this. Uh you know, for four hour only, for only merchant, something else that would make sense within the confines of what we're trying to do downtown.
Do we get a sense of who's parking there, are are commuters or?
I can tell you, I'm not gonna name business names, but I can tell you uh feedback from parking enforcement. The majority of the business owners are compliant, there are several businesses in the downtown area who refuse to cooperate. And they go out and they shuffle their cars every two hours.
Mm-hmm.
And they're defeating the purpose of what we're trying to accomplish.
Right.
I don't understand it, because to me, they're only hurting themselves and their neighbors and their argument is that the Water Street Lot is is too far to walk. It's too dangerous, it'll be too dangerous in the winter, so trying to be problem solvers, we we looked at the Smith Street Lot and said maybe this is a viable option.
I would say that we've received the same complaints about uh the hair salons and things like that, that the two hour parking uh is a little restrictive. And with the downtown area having uh quite a few of those businesses, maybe a a centralized spot for at least a four hour portion would be something that Town Council would. Uh consider.
Uh uh again, I would go back to the 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 fact that we had parking enforcement previously, it just wasn't as robust as it is now. And that enforcement was for one hour parking and so um anyone who was visiting a salon a year ago would have had a one hour parking space, they now have a two hour parking space. We also have available four hour parking spaces, I do think there are several opportunities that are underutilized at present. Um I've I've been working a lot with DPW and trying to identify those, uh Lafayette being one, for example. We don't even have signage in Lafayette, uh that's an opportunity for four hour slash merchant parking. We have other pockets that we can better define, we did a nice job of um defining parking spaces at the end of Chestnut, the corner of Chestnut and Main. We have, I believe, six spaces that are clearly painted and defined, it's um it I think it also takes away the stigma of a parallel parking space. When you have that definition, because you know you can fit in there, um and and that's that that's intimidating to people, can I fit in in that spot? Well, we we if if it's painted properly, you can fit in there, I think we um need to continue to go work with DPW, work with Traffic Advisory. And identify um all opportunities that still exist, again Lafayette being one such example. And then perhaps we'll go back and 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 revisit this, but I think it would be um a very damaging decision for business at this point to change. When I go past that parking lot now in the square at the Smith Street Street Lot, there are spots available. There were never spots available back, you know, back before parking enforcement, that attracts people to want to go and make use of any number of businesses there. So um I would be strongly opposed to to this proposal at this time.
I'd ask to table it.
So um we we can either vote on it or we we or we can we can vote to table?
I would move to table it because more data's coming in, I don't saying absolutely not dismissing it, but I feel like we need a little more data. Um in watching it.
Alright, so uh there's a motion to table then seconded by um Counselor uh Chines, um all those in favor? Okay, so a five to zero, uh unanimous vote to table that that last recommendation, I think we have one more.
Yeah, last request is uh an additional uh no parking here at corner sign on Grafton Street at the intersection of uh Main Street. Twenty feet from the intersection, uh this is actually uh incorrect, there's already one uh no parking here at a corner sign on Grafton Street. But it would be reflected on both sides, uh Grafton is, if you're not familiar with it, it's can be kind of a tight tight squeeze down there. Especially if one car's trying to make it down and there's already a car that's uh parallel parked there.
Uh any questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion uh relative to the signage on Grafton Street as is described by Lieutenant Anderson.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Smith Galvin, seconded by um Vice Chair Santos, any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is um uh item eleven subsection four. For a parking uh sign, parking signage on Grafton Street, all those in favor? Seeing a five zero vote, the motion passes.
I have one more question for Lieutenant Anderson, for a future meeting, um so. I um work out at River, I'm feeling really good, but I do it two mornings a week, Monday at seven and and Friday at seven AM. I cannot believe how badly people behave at the intersection of West Water and North Ave now that the kids are crossing. Um is it West Water? That's West Water, so you know how people squish that intersection and so cars might have trouble? I've seen so many cars drive on the wrong side of the road to take a left, which is bad. Um a lot of them mothers with or parents with children, but what I'm seeing more of is. It's not clearly marked maybe that kids are crossing and the kids are crossing quickly. Cars coming down North Ave onto West Water are making that turn really fast and they're just not seeing the kids in the crosswalk. Um there are double trains coming, twice, twice I think, right when the kids are um walking to the Galvin. And so I think people are trying to beat the train traffic, so it was it was amazing to watch. Na- now for like how many mornings they've been in school, how close some things happen and maybe even if you we had. You know, I don't wanna add signs, but it's not clearly marked maybe that kids are crossing and they're little, some of them are fifth grade, they're little peanuts. Um and and it was, it was crazy, I mean, I didn't wanna make a citizen's arrest and go up and, but I almost did, it was not good.
I I think the best thing for us to do is add that to the agenda for the next meeting.
Oh, for the next meeting, that's what I'm saying.
I think VHB is the authority to to look at that and see how we can appro- improve that intersection.
I didn't wanna forget it, I just wanted you to say like, put it on the line for a next meeting.
Yeah.
Um because it it really, um it scared me just seeing them.
I don't know what signage we could use, but I'm sure that VHB would have a good idea.
Perfect, thank you so much and sorry to jump that in, but.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant Anderson, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Scory.
Thank you.
Alright, mov- moving on to item eleven C, which is uh um an issue relative to adverse possession regarding a Redfield Road. And I'll turn it over to uh Town Council Mullen.
Um the council and the Board of Selectmen in Reading have already approved the sale of a tax title parcel. Which is mostly in Wakefield and partially in Reading at twenty eight Redfield Road. Uh and that was for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in uh to Wakefield, a lesser sum to Reading. Uh to be paid by uh Ms. Cara Mead, Ms. Mead uh doing some due diligence. Uh has determined uh that there was an encroachment. The house that is on twenty eight Redfield Road is, to a disturbing extent, on the neighboring property. And this is not a tiny, this is feet, not inches we're talking about. So um she is before the ZBA in Wakefield to obtain permission to rebuild the house. Firmly within the the um uh the lot lines, uh she needs zoning relief from the some of the setback requirements. And in the process of seeking that approval, uh the abutter, whose property is encroached upon, the abutters. Uh came forward and suggest and expressed some concern. And they would be ne- needed to sign on to a uh a permit application along with Ms. Mead. For the demolition of the existing building, if and when that happens. And so I met with everybody involved and the abutters raised the good point, hey. Isn't this something where you, the town, could actually claim adverse possession? Because presumably this house has been there more than twenty years. And I was at first going to say, well, of course not, that would be ridiculous, and then it occurred to me, hey, nobody elected me. So I said, maybe before I commit the town, I ought to ask those who have the power to commit the town to do so. So what I have done is prepared a waiver of adverse possession document. Uh which I would propose that you uh approve and sign and I'm going to get the treasurer to approve and sign. Uh he's out of town right now, uh I'd ask the treasurer, because under our bylaws, both your board and the treasurer. Sign off on the sale of tax title land, but I'd be looking, obviously happy to answer your questions, but I'd be looking for a vote. To approve uh the waiver of potential claim of adverse possession that I prepared and I'd ask you to sign it.
And all parties are happy with that?
Yes.
Excellent.
Any questions for Town Council Mullen? S E Alma Mullen, my C I L. So seeing none, then I I will entertain um a a motion for a waiver of potential claim of adverse possession on uh. For the property as indicated by Count- Town Council Mullen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by uh Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Chines, any discussion? Seeing none, then the motion would be for the council to sign off on the waiver of potential claims of ad- of adverse possession as described by Town Council Mullen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing a unanimous vote of five zero, the motion carries and we'll sign that now. Thank you, Mr. Mullen.
Thank you.
The next item is item number twelve on the agenda and this is actually a very exciting item, um given our our location this evening. Uh this is the item, uh this is consideration of the uh creation of a Clean Lake Committee. Um I should start out by saying that we we did previously have a committee that that did um work over several years. Relative to the lake and and considered a lot of different options rel- um in terms of remed- uh remediation measures. And I would like to take a moment to just thank those members and those include uh Lenny Malveen, Doug Heath, Allison Simcox. Uh Steve Breton, uh Dennis Clarity, Bill Butler, uh Charles Ingersoll, uh Frugli- Frank Luciani. Uh Janice Nygro, Jim Murphy, Bill Boudry, uh Bill Conley, Joel Beth. And Mike Collins, the former town engineer, and for several years, um that committee did a lot of work, they did a lot of exploratory work. And there's a lot of um information they gathered, there's um a lot of material that that they put together. And um I've been in discussions with uh the Department of Public Works in terms of what a new Clean Lake Committee would look like. What its purpose would be, what its intent would be, and as it's described uh in the packets that you've all received, um the bot- the. The short answer is implementation, uh there had been um some analysis, some consideration of of different opportunities for the lake. Uh but that the last committee really concluded its work in earnest, um at least um in April of twenty eighteen, if not sooner. Uh really with 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 no ultimate clear directive going forward. So uh this would be the creation of 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 a new committee, we have um new leadership in in the Department of Public Works. We have a a great team of um and Mr. Conway, uh of environmental um manager Claire Moss. And town engineer Bill Renaud and um I've I've spoken with with all of them about the opportunities that present themselves here. And ultimately, this will be an opportunity to uh focus on the water quality of the lake, the al- the end goal being that. The lake will be fishable and swi- swimmable, uh that will not happen next year, that will take some time, it'll be a very deliberate approach. Um we mentioned earlier Friends of Lake Quanapowit and the work that they're doing um up at the head of the lake in in the the coming months. Uh working with DPW, things like a stormwater management, uh um trying to have a more aligned and systematic approach. To make sure that we're not uh adding further pollutants or otherwise compromising the lake quality. But instead uh reversing that trend and making smart decisions with respect to our projects going forward as to. Provide us with with the 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 best capacity to to improve the lake as 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 um we have here today. Um it also, there's also a number of compliance issues, both at the state and federal level. And um this uh Clean Lake Committee will be addressing all of those, I know that uh Counselor Smith Galvin has been very involved in 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 discussions as well relative to this. Um there's, this is a really unique opportunity, it's a really exciting opportunity that we're we're really bringing together. Uh potentially a great group of people, uh the proposal uh before the council is that this be a a committee of seven. And it be a a working group of seven, seven individuals um who would be committed to implementation. Um who uh I know that there are certain members of our community who have already gone through a lot of the materials. That the prior committee had compiled and done, a lot of the work that they had done, so this is not starting from scratch, this is not setting aside all that they have done. This is building off of it, but understanding that we have different mandates going forward and a different um direction and and new new leadership. Um and so the packet um outlines what the structure of the committee would look like, I believe uh Bill Renaud is here. From the Department of Public Works, Bill, if you could just come up and and answer any questions that um our council may have relative to this committee.
Yeah, so uh Bill Renaud, town engineer, um yeah, excited to to be part of of um of this new committee for sure. Um if the council decides to to go in that direction, um I think um Council Dombrowski talked a lot about um. About the mandates that we have at the federal level, which are really gonna drive a lot of um our decisions over the next, you know, ten to fifteen years. And um you know, really, I think, you know, we have a townwide responsibility, but obviously we have um, you know, a a um. Uh a real opportunity to to focus um a lot of that energy that we would be spending on this program around the lake. And and that's really what I think we'd be looking to do, um one of the main pieces of the program is is including public participation and, you know, having boards and committees. Um uh you know, having residents from the town in- involved in the process is 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 one of the objectives of the program. And and this would be a great opportunity to dovetail those uh that initiative.
Does anyone have any questions for uh Mr. Renaud? Counselor Chines?
Uh, thank you. Uh, just a quick question. I assume that all of the sort of content, all of the information that was gathered through the prior committee, you have that, uh, Mr. Renaud, at your disposal, so that, that work isn't getting lost in any way?
No, and there's a lot of it, so, oh yeah, yeah, we definitely have it.
I'd also like to thank, uh, Mr. Collins as well, and he reached out as recently as today. Um, he retired, um, about a year or so ago. Um, but he's committed to also making sure that there's a smooth transition of information as well, uh, which, which is great. And, you know, and, um, Mr. Collins is a longtime resident, and we appreciate that. Uh, the composition of the committee, um, that's proposed to be established would be, um, chaired by my, uh, Mr. Renaud in his, in his capacity as town engineer. Uh, and then we would have members of the committee that would include, uh, Claire Ma- Moss, uh, who is focused on all things in environmental management, st- stormwater, uh, management. Um, a representative from Friends of Lake Quanapowhat, um, a representative from the Conservation Commission, a representative from the Environmental Sustainability Committee, and then, uh, posting for two residents, um, a- at large. And those would be folks that, that have a, just a sincere interest, um, in this, uh, in, in this endeavor. And then I would, um, ultimately appoint a town council liaison as well, who would also be involved with this. Um, I think it's important to, to stress that this is a, um, a multi-year commitment. This is something that we're, you know, we'll, this would be a group of seven. We're looking to keep it small deliberately. Um, it's going to be a very intense working group. Um, it's the opportunity for DPW to have, you know, the, the, the support of, of our residents as well. Um, but it's intended to move forward with implementation and to just keep going, and keep going, and keep going. Um, and again, the ultimate goal is, is swimmable and fishable, and I am absolutely confident that we will get there uh, with, with the commitment and leadership that we, that we have in place where this committee to be together. Counselor Smith Galvin?
I, I just wanted to add that I, I think this ti- is a good time to be doing this because of the municipal vulnerability work that we've been doing and the Wakefield Resilient, and I see this really segueing with that work, and I think just by function of having you leading it, that will not get lost, so.
Great.
Appreciate that.
For sure. Counselor Chines?
Uh, thank you. Just a, a, uh, sort of logistical question. For the, uh, the members that aren't sort of town employees, um, you know, the members, uh, the two members of the public and so forth, do we envision that there would be sort of a term for their time on that committee, given that this is intended to be sort of a, a longstanding committee? Um, you know, thinking about some of the other boards and commissions in town where we do have, you know, set terms of two years, three years, whatever it is, uh, for those bodies. Uh, if this is intended to be permanent, how would we assure that there's sort of cycling through of some of those, those individuals from the public?
I think that, that's something we can consider. Um, I know in speaking with, uh, Mr. Renaud, the continuity of this small working group may be an attractive aspect to it, so, um, I don't have a s- I, I personally don't have a strong preference on that. Um, I think it's a little bit different than some of the other committees we have in town in that it's going to be work that keeps building upon work that's been done. So there's a certain knowledge base, but I understand, you know, your, your question as well. I think it's a good one. We could also, um, potentially set the two residents at large for, you know, defined terms. I, my understanding from my work with you, Mr. Renaud, is it would be probably, at least a three-year term would probably make sense.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Because anything short of that, I think we're, we're losing some efficiency.
At, at least, yeah, three years, yeah.
And, and I, Mr. Chair, I'd be comfortable with a three-year term, or, you know, even a four-year term. Um, I, I do think it's important to make sure that we've got some ability for those, you know, particularly those two appointments from the public to be able to cycle through so that, um, you know, as individuals become, uh, interested and as individuals get involved, they have an opportunity to participate.
Uh, might I suggest one option would be that one of the, the, um, the slots would be a three-year term, the other, a four-year term? Would that, would that be acceptable?
Makes sense.
All right, so, um, further questions for, uh, Mr. Renaud, or about this? Counselor Butt?
Um, this is great, and as someone who is an associate member of the Friends of the Lake, who's still holding out back there, they love this lake, um, this is great. I'm going to ask that we, we think about some deliverables, because, so I was, uh, secondhand heard about the last phase and all the great work that went into there, and so I really look forward to actually deliverables. And so if we put some of that in, because I think having open-ended, um, you know, as someone who stir- who sat on the lake bench committee, we, we had a policy to come out with, there's going to be recommendations and policies, but if we kind of say, you know, December of twenty nineteen, or December of twenty twenty, um, I'm still waiting to read that consultant report from California that was part of the last committee. So I think if we can put some deliverables in there, it just makes for a stronger, it gives you direction, it gives the committee direction, and it helps with the timeline. So, um, you know, maybe a town meeting, April town meeting, you guys present with some recommendations. Something I would, I would, it doesn't need to be in here, but I think for us to all have a shared understanding of deliverables would be helpful.
Sure, just to dovetail with, with what we're doing with our, um, with the NIPD's program, we have an annual report that's due at the end of this month, just to ki- give you an idea of when we're, you know, really, um, looking at the year that we've done, you know, at least what we've, what we've accomplished over the past year and, and where we're going, so. Um, yeah, April will be fine. I think the fall town meeting would also be an option too, so I, I, whatever the.
That's great, yeah, great.
I would just say that, you know, having, um, spent a lot of time working with you, Bill, and working with Claire Moss as well, and this, and, and Joe Conway as well, the level of commitment that all three of you have demonstrated and the leadership you've demonstrated, I, I think is going to be a fantastic asset to this committee. You know, when, when I came to you and talked to you about this idea, the, you know, your receptiveness, but also your ability to very quickly see the interconnectivity of this committee, so it's not a standalone, but instead it's, it's really just the, you are quarterbacking. You know, you, you are really the nucleus, and a lot of things flow from that. So the kind of coordination for the projects we have ahead, as, as Counselor Smith Galvin said, the MVP, you know, initiatives, um, i- it, it all, it all flows together, you know, no pun intended. Um, so with that, then, um, I will entertain a, a motion for the appointment for the creation of the Clean Lake Committee to, um, to be chaired by, uh, Mr. Renaud, to be, um, a me- a member to include, uh, Clara Moss, or her, her position. Um, a member of Friends of Lake Quanapowhat, a represent- a commissioner from the Conservation Commission, a member of the Environmental Sustainability Committee, and two residents at large, one for a three-year term, the other for a four-year term, and we would post those as we normally do on the website and in the print media, et cetera, receive applications, and then, you know, make, um, a determination, um, and appointment thereafter.
So moved.
Second.
So, uh, moved by Counselor Chines, seconded by, uh, Vice Chair Santos. Any further discussion?
Just a point of information, just to clarify. So the intent for, uh, the member of the Conservation Commission and so forth is that the Conservation Commission would appoint that member. I don't know if we need to be specific about that.
Correct.
Component of it. The Friends of the Lake Quanapowhat would appoint a representative.
To, um, to be, and speaking with, uh, in, in these kind of planning discussions, um, a, one of the commissioners of the Conservation Commission would, would be on this committee, a commissioner would be, and a, one of the, um, members of.
But they would decide.
They would decide.
That's correct. I, but there's, I want to, you just, you confirm that it's a commissioner, not just, yes. A distinction there. All right, so with that, we have a motion that's been clarified, and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, seeing a unanimous vote of five to zero then, the motion carries, and we look forward to, to this great work ahead. It's exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, in the interest of time, uh, we have item number thirteen, constituent issues. If there is anything pressing that someone has, we can identify tonight. Otherwise, we could defer that to our next meeting, which is in just a couple weeks' time. Seeing no issues. Um, item number fourteen is chairman's comments for the same reasons. Um, I would like to defer the public safety building update and the envisioned Wakefield updates in the interest of time. I do, however, want to, um, announce the, the tribe board meeting. Um, there had been discussion a few, uh, meetings ago about the idea of bringing together, uh, for, for the budgeting process and in general, the town council, the, uh, finance committee, and the school committee, and having a tribe board meeting. Well, that has now been set. I've reached out to, um, the school committee and, uh, finance committee, and we have set that meeting date for, uh, October seventeenth at seven PM. That will be at, at the Galvin Middle School auditorium. Um, and this is a really important next step, I think, um, in our revisiting how we budget and, and getting ahead of the budgeting process in a way that we hadn't done previously, and so I'm really looking forward to that. So again, that's October seventeenth at seven PM, uh, Galvin Middle School Auditorium. Moving on next, number, I, item number fifteen, um, we need to set regular fall town meeting dates. So there is, um, I will entertain a motion to set the regular, uh, fall town meeting date, uh, to be, to open on November eighteenth of twenty nineteen?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Chines?
Can I just add something?
Of course.
If it goes several days, that's the week before Thanksgiving. So we just want to be mindful to not go to the next week, I would say. Um, every, is, what day of the week is the eighteenth? Is that a Monday?
Please, I'm.
Okay, so we, we, we should, sometimes we just spur it. We need to think about having it that, that whole week.
It may be consecutive, it may be, exactly, yes. Um, so understanding that, that it would begin, but it may not be the normal Monday, Thursday, because of that. Right, exactly. All right, um, so we have a motion and a second. Um, no further, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, the motion carries unanimously. The next, um, uh, item is item fifteen B, open town meeting warrant. Uh, open the, opening the warrant, uh, for tonight, beginning tonight, September ninth of twenty nineteen. Yes.
So I, uh, it's eight-thirty on September ninth, so I just find it odd, business hours have closed, so I'm, I'm just curious about why that was just, I feel like it should say September tenth. I think to, to up in town officially as it's past business hours seemed odd to me that we're voting on that. Is there a reason?
No. Sure, I, I don't, I think it's, it's somewhat arbitrary. It's, it's just traditionally been done the night that it's, it's voted upon.
The town meeting is when we open the warrant.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, I will entertain, um, a motion to open the, the town, the fall town meeting warrant, um, today, September ninth, twenty nineteen.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Smith Galvin, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Any discussion? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing a five zero vote, motion carries unanimously. Next is, uh, closing of the fall town warrant, um, on October tenth, twenty nineteen at four-thirty PM. I will, um, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And moved by, uh, Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Chines. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, the motion carries unanimously. Um, item number sixteen is, is trail sign. Um, this is a proposed trail sign, um, on, uh, at the JJ Round parking lot. You recall that Jimmy Crump, um, the boy scout, um, working towards his Eagle Scout. Um, honors had a really great project he presented before us. We had asked him to provide us back with a visual of the sign that he was considering. That was included in your packets. Um, I will entertain a motion to a. Jimmy is here.
Because we can't see.
Oh, sorry, Jimmy, please come on up. What a pleasant surprise.
Thanks for waiting.
Yes. Good evening, Jimmy. Welcome. Thank you for coming back.
You're welcome.
So, uh, why don't you just, maybe just briefly tell us about your sign?
Yes, so, um, I'm taking the idea from a past Eagle project, um, over at Mapleway Playground. Um, just a four by four, two four by four poles with decking on the back, and then a piece of fiberglass covering the map itself. Just simple design, um, nothing too complicated, just to get the point across that the trail is there. Uh, I provided the images in the slideshow, um, so, yeah.
Counselor Chines?
Just a question. So is this the sign from Mapleway, or?
It's, it, the photos is, yeah, it's the sign from Mapleway. I'm basically making a, a copy of that, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Any further questions? Yeah, all right. Well, seeing none then, I'll entertain a motion relative to, uh, the trail sign proposed, uh, for JJ Round Parking Lot in Holland Grove.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Chines, seconded by, uh, Vice Chair Santos. Any discussion?
Very sweet looking.
Good to have you back.
Seeing none, then item sixteen before you is, is the approval of the trail sign, um, as described by, uh, Mr. Crump. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing a unanimous vote of five zero, congratulations, and again, thank you so much, Jimmy, for doing this.
Thank you.
It's a great project.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Sorry to keep you waiting.
No worries.
We can't, we can't see beyond the light.
Item number seventeen is notice of public, uh, hearing. We need to set, um, a, a notice, a date for the tax classification hearing. Um, the, um, I will entertain a motion to set the date for October twentieth, twenty nineteen at seven-ten PM, which would be, uh, during one of our, uh, future scheduled town council meetings, and this will be for fiscal year twenty-twenty tax classification.
Did you say October twentieth or twenty eighth?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth, okay, great. I'm so moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Chines. Any discussion? All right, so item then, uh, item seventeen, the tax classification for October twentieth, twenty nineteen, hearing at seven-ten PM as a part of our regular meeting for fiscal year twenty-twenty tax classification. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing a vote of five zero, the motion passes unanimously. Um, item number eighteen is the Wakefield Memorial High School Working Group. Uh, you may be aware that the school committee, um, has created a high school working group. Um, and they're looking for the, the appointment of two, uh, town counselors to be a part of that group, and I've had discussion with, um, two of the town, of our town counselors, Vice Chair Santos and Counselor Chines, and, um, I'm, uh, would like to appoint both of you to serve in that capacity.
Thank you.
Um, item nineteen is licenses. We have two licenses before us this evening. We, uh, they're both, or actually, excuse me. One is a one-day liquor license that's submitted by Ms. Allison Williams.
I've moved that we approve the liquor license for Ms. Williams.
She's, just one, one point of clarification, I'm sorry, so moved and seconded, so it made by, um, Counselor, uh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Chines. Um, Ms. Williams has an address in New York, and I had asked, um, uh, our madam clerk about this, and it appears that she has family here, and that's, that's the connection to Wakefield, because it seemed a little bit unusual. There'd be someone from, um, Takahoe, New York, coming to the Americal for a first year old's birthday party. Um, just point of clarification.
We're just that much of a drop.
Apparently, yes, we are a destination. Any discussion on this motion? All right, so the motion before you is a one-day liquor license, uh, at the Americal for Ms. Allison Williams for November thirtieth, twenty nineteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing a vote of five zero, the motion carries unanimously. Item number, uh, nineteen B is, is a, a common victular license for, uh, sought by Stefano Barbiero, and applicant is seeking a, a license for, uh, Marina Caccina Italiana located at twenty-three Broadway in Wakefield.
So moved.
Anything on motion?
Yes.
Is this still within the family?
Um, no, they do, so they did sell.
They sold?
They did.
Yeah, that's too bad.
Yeah, yeah.
So I have a, I have a motion.
I'm sure Stefano will be fabulous.
And it's, so I have a motion by, by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Chines. Any discussion relative to this, um, approval?
So maybe just a clarification. So thi- this is requiring a new, uh, license because of the change in ownership, correct?
Correct, yep, yes.
Yes. All right, with that said, any further questions? All right, seeing none, um, the motion before you is, is for a, a common victular license for, uh, Stefano Barbiero, uh, for operation of Marina Caccina Italiana located at twenty-three Broadway, Wakefield. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing a unanimous vote of five zero, the motion carries. Um, next is item twenty, gift acceptance from the, or, to the, uh, BB Memorial Library. I'll entertain a motion for the acceptance of gifts as, as detailed in the packets.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, moved by Count, uh, Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Chines, and just for the record, these include, um, some unrestricted cash donations as well as, um, various supplies, printers and the like. So, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing a vote of five zero, the motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-one, uh, is warrants, uh, and this is, um, an update from Counselor Chines relative to warrants for, uh, last and current fiscal year. So Counselor Chines, if you could just briefly walk us through this?
Sure, so I'll be brief because the information, uh, is now in the packets. Uh, thank you to, uh, Town Accountant, uh, Kevin Gill and.
Looks great, thank you.
Uh, and Sherry and, uh, Town Administrator Mayo. Um, in summary, uh, I signed, uh, two sets of warrants. Uh, one was the last set of warrants for fiscal twenty nineteen, warrants fifty through fifty-five, for a total of eleven point two million dollars. Uh, the second set was the first warrants for fiscal twenty-twenty, which began on July first. Uh, again, warrants one through four for a total of ten point four million dollars. Uh, again, happy to answer any questions if folks have any.
We should point out that since the packets are now online, um, anyone can go and get this information. You can go onto the main, um, um, homepage, or you could go onto our town council page under news and announcements for that information. So it's, it's all contained in there. All right, so with that, I'll, I'll entertain a, um, actually, Tom, we don't, we don't need a vote on that. This is just an update. My apologies. All right, um, item number twenty-two is madams, uh, matters not anticipated for the agenda within the forty-eight hour public notice period. anticipated for the agenda within the forty-eight-hour public notice period. No one brought into my attention. There are none, I assume? Correct, okay. Item number twenty-three, announcements and acknowledgements. If you have an announcement or acknowledgement you'd like to make, you know, please, so identify, and I'll recognize you.
Very good.
Vice Chair Santos?
Just about Jimmy Good. And I've known him for forty years, because he was the parent of a friend, but then knew him as my work in the town, starting decades before I joined the Board of Selectmen. But, you know, you might not have always agreed with him, but you never doubted Jim's agenda, love for his family and love for this town. He was very authentic and worked very hard to serve the town. So it was a big loss, but his family really celebrated his life, certainly at the wake when I saw them. So, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Chines?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. Thank you. First of all, I did mention that Counselor Dinaco and I attended the rededication of the Round Park on Saturday. Really beautiful day. And just wanted to again extend sort of our thanks to the Round family for the work that went into refurbishing that, redoing the plaques. It was, even though the family's sort of scattered outside of Wakefield, it was great to see them come back and see the pride that they have in this community and their grandfathers and great-grandfathers' legacy. Also, did briefly want to congratulate Wakefield Soccer Association for their fiftieth anniversary celebration on Sunday. Another beautiful day. While I'm disappointed some of my colleagues weren't willing to play bubble soccer, a lot of people were and had a good time. And certainly, my two little five-year-old soccer players had a great time there as well. Finally, just wanted to mention congratulations as well to the Wakefield Public Schools for a successful first day and first short week of school. You know, also did want to put out a reminder, as Counselor Santos mentioned, we do have a lot of kids out and about now, and the days are getting shorter, as we've experienced here today. Just a reminder and request for everyone in the community to please drive safely, be aware of the kiddos that are out there going to and from school and to and from different activities so that our successful start for the school year can continue and we can keep everyone safe.
Thank you. Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Just some updates from the Lake Department. I went to one of their meetings last week. I think I keep giving updates on the solar program, but it's about fifty percent subscribed right now. So really, really good interest in that program. They're also looking at expanding solar and looking at possibly putting solar on poles in commercial areas. So that would be a little different than what we've seen and frankly, what I've seen in other communities. But so that's something that's probably going to be up for discussion coming forward. The other thing I thought was interesting is they're working very closely with National Grid on the, the high-voltage line work that is being done in town. And they are utilizing their Facebook page much more regularly. So any traffic updates from some of the gas work that they have going on, as well as some of the National Grid work, I really encourage people to stay tuned to the Facebook page there. The other news they have is Ken Chase, one of their longtime commissioners, was recognized by the New England Public Power Association for Commissioner in Service. So really nice honor for him, who has served this community for a long time. Quickly, just on some of the sustainability things, there's a survey going on right now that has to do with the municipal vulnerability work, which is the climate change resilience. It has a couple of questions in there that will help guide the Environmental Sustainability Committee as to what we want to focus on. So really encourage people to take that. It's on our webpage. And a shout out to the Wave 5K that is coming up on October fifth. Really hope that we can promote that and get a lot of people out to run and walk the lake. It starts from the lakeside on the fifth of October. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Butt?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. As Counselor Smith-Galvin mentioned surveys, I wanted to thank everyone who responded to the MBTA survey. We had over two hundred and fifty respondents, which is pretty impressive in a short time span. Jen McDonald and Steve Mayo and I will be working on a response that's due to the Department of Transportation by the fifteenth. So we'll work on that. But thank you to everyone that responded. In wearing my liaison hat, I just wanted to say I went to the Albion Culture Exchange monthly meeting last week, and they are working with the DPW. And those, that bathroom is coming shortly. So we are hopeful that it will be done by 2020. And so we are working on that. And just to let everyone know here, we had successful office hours at the farmer's market earlier this summer, and we have scheduled them again for September twenty-first, nine to one PM. And just a little quick story about how successful that is. Somebody came over and mentioned that the traffic signal right by Vets Field went by really quickly, and it wasn't enough time for her mother with her granddaughter in the stroller. And so Steve looked into it, and it actually was malfunctioning. The walk signal was only going four seconds, and she'd be going twenty seconds. And so really good opportunity when something looks not working correctly or something you have questions on, just let us know, and we will try to fix it.
I wanted to send out special thanks to a lot of the people who were able to make this, this meeting possible tonight. This was a first for the town council, and I think it was a really, really unique opportunity for us to really work on some exciting initiatives going forward. So I wanted to specifically thank from Department of Public Works, Chris Pierce, Mackenzie O'Keefe, Anthony Anzavino, James Ayashwa, Michael Curtin, Dennis Fazio, and WCIT. And WCIT, Tom Stapleton, Ryan Boyd, Ian McDermott, Pat Goodwin, Sean DeJam Batista, Adam Nestle, Barbara Worley. Thank you. A special thanks to our clerk, Sherry Dalton, who's been a phenomenal asset in putting this all together, as well as our town administrator, Steve Mayo, who is traveling this evening. But I thank everyone for taking part. I thank you for tuning in. And I think that these sorts of opportunities, when we can take advantage of them, we should. So again, thank you to everyone who made this happen. This was not an easy endeavor. It took a lot of commitment from a lot of great folks. With that, I want to remind everyone that our next meeting will be Monday, September twenty-third, 2019, at 7:00 PM, back at the WCIT studios. So we're going back indoors for that one. But with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor, all right, too many seconds there. Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Chines. All those in favor?
Aye.
And thank you for joining us, Wakefield. Good night.